So it being 7:32, we're going to open the meeting and for all those involved, this meeting is being recorded. And suppose we could you could start with some minutes if that's okay. We do not have Ryan, so. Chris, do you have the motions there?
Yeah, I do. Hang on a second.
If you would do some minutes for me, please.
Let me, let me just get there.
Okay. Take your time.
Motion, motion, motion. Here we go. Oh, by the way, I did read, listen to the YouTube video of October the 5th and read all the documentation. So, okay, so the motions for the minutes are not there, so I can just make the motions.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you just make.
Please move, move to the minutes of October 5th, 2021.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, a second by Dave. Okay, any changes or emissions here? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
At the record show, one, two, three, four people, four people in favor, and Brian is not with us either.
Do you gotta do a roll call, Warren? Because we're on zone.
Oh, yeah, I keep forgetting that.
Sorry.
Okay, I will, I will. Tell us that. Will you, Jeremiah?
Aye.
Are you aye, Chris?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm aye as well, so there you go, four in favor.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes, please.
I move that we accept the minutes of October 19th, 2021 is written.
I second that as well.
Okay, Dave, second that. And how say you, Jeremiah?
Aye.
And Chris?
Aye.
And Dave?
Aye.
And myself, aye as well. Okay. Do we need to, we should probably wait until eight o'clock to do the motions to withdraw.
Yes.
You gotta wait till time certain, right?
The time certains, right, so. So let's, since we have, since we have Dave J. Grande here, let's, let's go, let's do, I think you're probably here for the Shea Lane runoff issue there. So can you give us, you know, because we, I have people coming up to me in the store asking me about it, and I'm like, I have no idea. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, it felt like I was out of the loop here, as far as what was going on there. So, Dave, if you could, if you could give us some kind of a, at least an overview of what's happened there.
I could, and Danielle, can I share my screen? Because I have the plans with me, either that or you can bring up the plans.
You should be able to share.
All right, I'll give this a try, because I have the plans and I think they'll, they'll help out, they'll be illustrative. Can everybody see the plans, the plan set?
We, we can now.
Can guess.
Perfect. So this is, this is the subdivision plan that was accepted. And in particular, I want to focus. We've been getting a lot of feedback from, from both detention ponds, actually. This one here is, this is Gloria back in the top left corner. And there's a large detention pond in this area. It actually seems to be functioning well, considering that we are still under construction and these, these basins tend to get silted up. And I think that there was some confusion. There are two four bays in this particular pond. God bless you. The four bays are used to settle out the, the silts. And they don't, so as a result, as they're, they're doing their pre-treatment, the bottom of those four bays get a little clogged, so they tend to retain water a little bit longer. But the, the large portion of that basin is draining and it is, is draining reasonably well. I think, you know, before we wind up this subdivision, I think we need to go in, make sure it's scraped, cleaned and and then re-vegetated, because it's, it's clogged up some from all of the silts on the site. This site does have a lot of
Oops. Hello, we lose somebody?
Hi, Dave, he's, looks like he might be having a issue with his oh, maybe got him back with his internet connection.
I can hear him clicking.
I'm sorry, can you?
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, now we can hear you.
Okay, so this is the other basin we're focused in a little bit on. And if you actually take a look at the, the overflow for this basin, it called for a level spreader back in this area. Can everybody see that? Now, these, these two homes down in this area set, are set in probably the lowest point in that whole neighborhood. And so what's happening right now is, well, the way it was designed is there's supposed to be a level spreader here. And is if you can, if you can think about this in terms of, there used to be a large watershed and the water would naturally drain off. And that's what we call a sheet flow condition. And we want to emulate that sheet flow, so what they did is they made this, they designed this level spreader in this area. The problem is, is that that level spreader is not installed so that it dissipates energy coming out of the pond. If you can imagine it, the water that runs out of the pond then sits and then overflows evenly, all at one elevation to emulate that sheet flow that exists today. What's happened is they extended this and made it a swill and delivered it down to this particular area here.
Why?
Which, which is the low spot. So I think that, that I would recommend that there be some remediation done here. And I never want to overstep, as, as your representative, as your eyes and ears. It's up to us not to design something, but to insist that the developer or builder do their due diligence and give us
And correct any problems that come up.
Right.
So, so what's
And the way I see it is, we've approved a level spreader, and we don't have a level spreader here right now. What we have is we've got a, a swill that delivers the water down here. So by taking this off at a higher elevation and laying its sheet flow along this entire border here in this area where my cursor is, then we'll have a little bit more natural flow over the existing topography, rather than delivering a point source down to the, to the bottom here. Because they, in, in my opinion, and by the way, at, at least three times this fall, when we've had significant rainstorms, I've, I've taken it upon myself to stop by and make sure that I'm, I'm seeing this in, in adverse conditions. So that's, that's my thought. I, I think we'd need to ask Mr. Murray and, and the developer of, of, the builder of this lot to, to create a level area in here, as it's shown on the plan, to more closely emulate what was approved.
Okay, Dave, now, now, that level spreader you said has not been constructed. Is that true?
It's been constructed as a swill, so as you can imagine, from, from the outlet, it, instead of being leveled for, let's say, 25, 30 feet, it's running down grating.
Yeah.
Okay, and delivering a point, point discharge down in this general area.
So would it be possible to, to bring that, that area, that low area up ever so slightly and then to, in order to keep, in order to keep the water from leaving the level spreader? You say it's not been constructed as a level spreader, but it needs to be?
I, I believe so. I, it's, it's my opinion that there should either be a check dam at this point. If they want to leave this, you know, just because I, I did, I was out there and witnessed some of these test pits, by the way, for, with respect to drainage, not with respect to Title V.
Right.
They had very good soils down in this general area.
Right.
So my suggestion would be
I think the soils down there are sandy and they're a silky sand, though.
They, they are. They're, they're, they're a fine sand with, with some trace silts, with some The whole site is, is got significant silt on it.
Right, right.
So
So I can see why that, that's, not only that's where the silt's coming from, that's getting to these people's houses, but it's also why this not, it's not going, it's not being accepted into the soils as quickly as what they would, as, as what they would hope. So I'm assuming that the, that the detention ponds have been designed with that, with that slow perk and, or the slower perk in mind. So it sounds like the, basically what needs to happen is a reconstruction of that level spreader as a level spreader. And, and I do think a check dam is probably not a bad idea and probably should have been done a while ago to prevent this water from getting down to these people's homes. That be fair?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, I think it is fair, Warren, but again, I, I, I think what we can do is we can enforce this plan. And, and yeah, I, I, we, we need to insist that something be done, and I think that we, we have this on the plan, we should enforce the plan.
All right, so is, so, so does that, so what you're suggesting is that we need to bring the developer in for a meeting and say, listen, you know, and tell him, and say to him, why, you know, why haven't you built this level spreader as designed, number one? And number two, if you don't think you can control this, then we're going to require that you put a check dam in there. We're going to add it on to the approval. I mean, that's going to be.
With
Mr. Murray is here, I think.
Was he?
I think I see him. I think he might be driving. That's him, okay.
Okay.
Can you turn his mic on?
So that might, so that might be, that would probably be the answer then, so it shouldn't now who's, is the developer building this, the, the level spreader, or is, or is this piece of property now in the hands of a, of a contractor or somebody else?
I, I would say that it's part of the easement, it's part of the covenants of, of the acceptance of this subdivision. I would say that it is the developer.
Responsibility of the developer, okay.
Yeah, and I, I further add that the, the pond itself, you had made a mention that the, the pond is sized accordingly. I think the pond appears to be sized accordingly. But again, it's silted up. There was a significant amount of silt and erosion that went into that particular pond.
Right, well, I'm, I'm familiar with the soils in that area. That's how come I knew what was going on there. So so, well, actually, basically what we want to do is make some kind of a repair here, or some kind of a change. If, you know, whether it be the buildout of the level spreader or, or a check dam or some other methodology used to stop everything from going down to that low point, that low corner.
Right.
At this particular point, we kind of owe it to those people, so.
Mr. Pierce? Who, who's talking?
David Murray.
Oh, okay, David. Oh, there you go, there, you're, you're driving that. We can't see a face, that's all, David.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, no, no, that's okay.
Go ahead, Dave, what can you do to take care of this?
I think the only way to do it is do it a check, if I put a check dam through there, because if I continue that level spreader, the, the grade drops off significantly. So if I tried to make that level, I followed the existing grade as shown on the plan. If I tried to level that where the FES comes out, I'll be six feet higher than the abutting property with stone. And it's just going to leach through it and follow the same, same path that it's going. There's no way for me to change the topo of the, of the land going down towards the abutters property without doing a check dam.
Okay, are you, but, but that begs the question, of course, and the question that it begs is, is this design faulty? Is there something wrong with this design?
The pond itself is working perfectly. The rate runoff is reduced.
Yeah.
You know, the rate of, the, the water, as everybody knows, we've had, we've broken records this year in the history of the amount of rain. We all know that.
You know that I know that extremely well, Dave.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is that, that pond has been working great. And it's, except for this, this year, this situation. And I, I think to Dave's comment is the water going down is, when I sold the lot to the builder on Lot 5, he had some problems. He made the house bigger, he did some things. I made him insert a swill, and he actually connected it to my swill. And he, he took the water and dragged it further down. Not that the water wasn't originally, wasn't going to go there anyway, because that's the way the site is. I have a 46-foot difference between the original grade from the top of Shea Lane to the butter, not a row, which is that was always been going that way. I mean, it, all through it, there's, there's no, no way, even if I control the water and I blocked the pond, the surface, the sheet flow, and as David mentioned, is still going through that property that way. It's, it's just the way it is. If you look at David's plan, the existing conditions plan, you'll see the topo on that. It's impossible for me to change what the glaciers had put there.
Yeah, I understand, I understand exactly what we're doing there. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do and why the level spreader and so forth. Because what you're trying to do is replicate the sheet flow that existed prior to development. That's what you're trying to do, because that's
And we did, and I actually Yeah, we actually reduced a lot of the water, believe it or not, by raising the, we raised that cul-de-sac eight feet, which took the, the original plan that was graded down towards the Nutter Road. We raised that cul-de-sac when we moved the pond, a total of eight feet, which changed all the grading along those, that, the end of the cul-de-sac, which significantly helped all those people on Nutter Road.
Right.
So, that being said, I, I agree with Dave. I think we need a check dam. I don't think I could do a level spreader that will actually work, because the water is going to go through the stone and find its way eventually to where it's going now anyway, where it's naturally going. But I think if I put a level, a, a check dam in, and I can try and slow it down and redirect it and help it, you know, go
So you put a check dam on the east end of that, on the, on the, on the east end of there, you put, you put your check dam that'll let, let the, let the level spreader hold the water a little longer, let it flow the way it was before. So I think, I think, I see what you, I see what you got to do. Is that something that we can get done sooner rather than later?
Yeah, I could, I just, I didn't want to do anything with the approval from the planning board. I talked to David about it. I'm willing to do what I need to do, as always. I just wanted the direction. I didn't want to go ahead and change something, do something with the planning boards at all.
No, that's okay. You could have come to, you know, anytime, Dave, you should have discovered us when, when this was, began to become a problem, and we would have supported what you tried to do.
I, I would, but it wa, it wasn't a problem till this year, until this abutter, till, till this developer, or the builder that I built, that, that I sold this lot to, that created some of these issues.
So that's what happened. It, it has been quiet, this is Chris, it has been quiet, David, since the, since, since the beginning of Shea Lane, when we had a bunch of, a bunch of problem, and that was, nothing was built out yet. We understood that issue. Right, right, but yeah, since, this has just started recently. I don't know when he took over the property, but if they've changed what you put in there, we got to get it back.
Chris, they just, they had issues with water. So what they did is they redirected their water over to, over towards the, towards the the detention
Yes, exactly.
And that, and that added to the quantity, trying to go through the level spreader, which was just exited down to the east and ended up down in the corner there.
Right, right.
So, so that's the problem. All right, do you, okay, so to move this right along here, do we want, do you want to have the engineers draw something up and and give it to us, Dave? I, I don't, I mean, you, you can do something, and they can draw it afterwards. I don't care, I mean, because
I would rather do that. I, I would prefer to do it with Dave Giogrande, and we come to an agreement of what, what will work, and then I, I'll just do it.
And then, and then let them pick it up on the ASBIL.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, Dave, Gene Grande, are you all set with that?
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I think that I think it's, it's better to have a third party involved, where this is a, an existing issue with some, with some abutters. I think that I'm, I'm fine reviewing these elements. You know, I, it's somebody else's work. I, I don't have a problem making suggestions, Lauren, but I'm not the designer of records, so.
Okay, so you're
comfortable, I'll do whatever the boards instructs me to do. I'll work with Dave, but I think that the, the preference would be have another engineer take a look at this, make sure it's correct and, 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 but, you know, if, if you'd like me to just work with Dave, I will.
Okay, well, I understand that completely, so, and that would, my preference would be to have the engineers draw something up overnight and let us get it in there, because my primary concern is to take care of these abutters, okay? So that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. Danielle?
Well, the problem is, I don't have an engineer of record anymore.
Well, hang on. Danielle, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, well, I guess just a couple of concerns. One, the engineer of record for this plan isn't really, it doesn't seem to be reachable and doesn't seem to be around. I don't know, we, if we, if there is some way that we can do something temporarily, but we should probably have a properly designed engineered plan that then Dave approves, reviews and approves. But I completely agree that something should be done as soon as possible to bring the abutters relief. It's, you know, it's, it's really been quite a, quite a long time they've been putting up with it. I, I also did just want to mention, I, I noticed at least one of the abutters on Nutter Road is here on the call, so I didn't know if you wanted to give them a chance to ask, ask any questions about, you know, what we're doing or make any comment, but.
Well, I think they see what we're trying to do here. We're trying to fix it, so, so, and it's okay, we, I, I've read all of the communications that they sent and everything, and and it's good that they wrote everything down, because it really helped me see what was going on, especially some of the video stuff. It was really
The video stuff was great.
That was great. They did a great job with that, so they certainly were welcome to comment on it, but, but before they do, I would really like to know what we're going to do here, or how, what kind of timeframe we're looking at, because right now, in the next week or two, it doesn't look like there's any major rain coming. But, you know, you know, the way things are, it could happen and I'd rather
Frost is coming soon.
Yeah, that only makes it worse, because that's, then it just runs down the surface of the ground.
It runs down the surface of the ground, and gets it more difficult to put anything in also.
Gets it, well, it gets it more difficult to control it as well.
Right.
So, so we really kind of want to
Get ahead of it.
Want to get ahead of it, yeah. So Dave, I'm going to go out a little bit. Well, first, Dave, Dave Murray, is, is it, do you have a relationship with an engineer of any kind that you could get something that they could just take a look at this and just come up with a basic design for the check dam?
I could, but it's probably going to take three months for them to even look at it. And that's why I was trying to, that's why I'm trying to do it, between him, Dave Giogrande and myself, because I can do it. It's just everybody's so busy doing stuff, this is, and the engineer of record, he doesn't work, do this anymore. So
Yeah, yeah.
To find, to bring somebody up to speed is I've already
Yeah.
And I'd rather dam is, I could do a check dam and try and control it within the next couple of days, you know, or next week. I could, I could get doing that under, you know, David's guidance, of course, and
Well, I think what I would like to do then, okay, well, this, this, unfortunately, Dave Murray, the responsibility for this does kind of fall on you. And whether you have an engineer of record or not at this point, it's something that you're going to have to deal with. So let me leave it like this. Why don't, Dave, why don't you, Dave Murray, why don't you give us, please do something as soon as possible. Give us a sketch or a drawing of some kind, and so that all Dave Jane Grandy's going to do is look at it and say, it looks like that'll be okay. In the meantime, we probably need to look at getting, you, you getting an engineer to certify what it is that you've done.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, because, I mean, I could, we're going to put the engineer on the end. I'm not going to put Dave Jane Grandy on the spot, because I'm going to let you design it, Dave Murray, because you certainly have more than enough experience to do this.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, does that work for everybody? That's, so of your, Jane Grandy, that keeps you out of that, other than the, an approving authority? Okay? Okay?
Thanks, pal.
Great. Well, you know, if we can take care of these people, you know, you know, and, and if you can do it, that would be good, and it'll give them a, a level of comfort that everybody's taking care of them, you know?
I've been doing that all along, Warren.
I, I know, but it's been, it's, I know it's been, trust it's been a tough go. It's been a tough go this year, so I, I sympathize with you, but we need to start, do something for these people this time. So I thank you very much for cooperating anyway and for helping out. If you can do that, Dave can look at it. We'll, and then we'll look at trying to get an engineer of record or something, because at some point, you're going to have to do an ASBIL.
I'm going to do it anyway.
You're going to have to have an engineer in there, so if, if in the process of, of doing that, they decide that there needs to be a change to the, to the way the check dam is done, that may be, that may be necessary, but I, I'm a little concerned that and I, and I'm really I really wish you still had an engineer of record, because I would like to ask them, I, I have a feeling that that design, not quite what it needed to be to handle that problem, so. But so, for as long as we stop the problem, and then we go through it and get an engineer at the end to certify what it is that's done, I think that'll all be okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions before we go anywhere else here? You can stop screen sharing, Dave, Gene Grandy and Neil, so we can talk to this couple of people. And so do anybody on the board, any members of the board have any questions or comments on what we're looking at here?
Mr. Pierce, this is John Davis. My wife and I, Patty, are on the call. And we were probably going to be buying the house at Shea Lane, so we've been intimately involved in everything that's been going on. Is it okay if we chime in for a second?
Sure.
Thank you. So, by the way, Dave has been fantastic. We've been working with Dave throughout this process, and he's been very helpful. But we're just a little bit concerned, obviously, in terms of the fact that we weren't expecting a swill to be installed in the first instance. We want to do what's right by the neighbors, our abutters on Nutter, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're being protected as well. So we just, you know, wondering what, you know, because obviously, we're trying to buy a house, we're not trying to, you know, buy a, a, a problem, and so we're just wondering what, what protections we will have, not just the abutters, but us as well, because we want to be good neighbors, but we all also want to make sure that we're protected. And again, we also want to make clear that Dave has been fantastic throughout this process.
Okay, so, so my, so the plan that we have in place right now that we just discussed does, makes for initially an immediate solution to the, to the problem, but temporary, and it may be temporary, it may be permanent, depending on how it goes. So Dave Murray is going to, he knows how to build a check dam. Just, I've known him for a long time. He knows what he's doing. So he's going to do that, and Dave Jane Grandy, as our peer review engineer, is going to review what gets done and comment on it. If his comments are that it needs to be done more or differently, then that's, then that's what we'll, that's what we'll take to, to back to Mr. Murray. But if, if he say, if, but if it appears to him, in his professional opinion, that'll do the job, that's fine. When we get an engineer of record that's going to ASBIL this, so which is going to have to be one, we're going to lean on him a little about this, about this level spreader, about whether or not the design of it is adequate, or whether it needs to be modified in some way. So, but one way or another, the water is going to go the way it's been going, and I don't know if you understood the explanation that, that Dave Jane Grandy gave, and that is that the water sheet flowed down there, straight across onto that adjoining property before. That's how it went, because of the difference in grades. And so the level spreader was an attempt to take what was obviously reduced flow and spread it out over, so that it simulated the sheet flow that existed before the development. So that's, that was the concept. So it's not going to affect you any. John, it's what, what, the only thing is that it's, changes that were made on that lot, on your lot, contributed to this, because they had a problem with water, and they directed it over to the, towards that, that detention pond and added to the problem, if you will. But I think it's capable of handling it, and if we can just let it, you know, because originally, all of that water sheet flowed across the lot line, so using the detention ponds, they flowed it down, they've controlled the rate of release. And it's just that the sheet flow system, that the, the level spreader system doesn't appear to be working the way it should. And we've lost the engineer that designed it, so we're going to have to work backwards on it. Do you have any questions on that?
Uh, no, and a lot of that went over my head admittedly, but I, I do trust that Dave, or both Daves know what they're doing, and we just wanted to, you know, make sure that Pete is protected, that we're protected, and
Right.
We appreciate the fact that you guys are, are looking to, you know, make sure that everybody's protected, so thank you.
Yeah, I have some experience in the whole thing myself, so I understand clearly what's happening here and what we need to do, so. So hopefully, what we, what we, what we come up with will, will solve the problem quickly, and then ultimately, we'll get a certification on a permanent solution before the end of the subdivision. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there someone else that wanted to speak on, does any one of the Nutter Road people, or are you guys all set? Okay, I don't hear anybody commenting. So um, if you intended to comment, make sure you unmute yourself so that we can hear you. Um, but if you're uh, if you're all set, then uh, and we can we can move on with this.
Warren, do we Warren, do we want to read something into the into the minutes on this? A motion of some sort or?
Not really, because we don't really have anything in front of us to make.
Okay.
Okay, so.
That's true. We don't.
So we're gonna we're gonna, you know, we're not done with this, you know, right now.
Oh, no, we're not.
Right now, what we're gonna do is immediately solve the problem. And then and then and then and we're gonna then we're gonna get some feedback from Mr. Jane Grandy about the solution. But then he's gonna say, yes, good, or no, I think it's a little something else needs to be done. However, it is, I'm sure that Mr. Murray will take care of it. And then at that point, um, and again, as I said, in the in the end, somebody's got to certify this. Some engineers got to do an ASB certify this. And that's what we'll be looking for. That's what we'll be looking for. The final reading is to whether or not the construction of this is gonna work.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Mr. G. Granny, thank you, sir, very much for attending tonight. That you were a great help. You needed that input.
Thank you. Always my pleasure.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Good evening.
You take care, sir. Okay, and Mr. Murray, you still with us?
Yeah, he's still there.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I see you. Okay, Dave, thank you very much. Do please do this quickly as possible. You know, I know we we gotta look like a pretty reasonable stretch of weather for the next week too, but you know, but let's not wait. Let's get it done and and be sure that you you if you want to sketch something up and give it to Dave Jane Grandy first, that wouldn't wouldn't hurt. But if you uh, but if you just know what you're gonna do and you know what you're gonna do and he can look at it afterwards and you can give him whatever and whatever uh, information you can give them on it that would uh, uh, as we move along here.
That's what I'm gonna do, Warren. I'm probably gonna go ahead and install it, make sure so I know what the conditions are and what I'm doing. And once I'm done and I can solve it, I may do two check dams. I I won't know until I actually get out there and start looking at this.
Yeah, I I understand exactly because you've put it. You can put one up close and then you can put a really a capture one a little down lower. I know exactly.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Yeah, no more water going.
I haven't done this road myself, so I already know what you're gonna do. So.
Yep, all right, good.
Just make sure the construction of a meets Dave's Dave Jane Grandy's uh, expectations. That's all.
I'll exceed it.
Okay, I hope so. That'll be great. And I thank you so very much for attending tonight and helping us out with this.
All right, thank you. Good night. Thank you, David.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Warren, you've made your eight o'clock. So you could do your, we could can we could do those continuances. Ones a continuance and the others a uh.
Okay, well, I gotta I gotta I gotta get my uh. I got everything on my iPad, but um, I gotta bring how to bring it back up. Okay, for our eight o'clock, no, this is a request to withdraw.
You gotta you gotta request withdraw and you gotta continuance.
Yep, but they continue.
I've bolted eight o'clock.
Can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that was. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please do.
Um, because I know it's uh, to withdraw without prejudice, but do you still need to read the legal notice into the record? I just wanted to ask that question.
Oh, you mean open the public hearing and then withdraw it? I don't think we need to do that, do we, Danielle?
It's been so long since we've done one. I can't remember.
I don't think we do. We also pulled the second legal ad once we knew that they weren't continuing.
So that it's not it's not officially a public hearing. No, they just have to withdraw without precedence. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, they they would. They just want to withdraw without prejudice in order to save themselves the money and the whole issue.
Right. Mr. Pierce.
That's why it's there. So go ahead. Go ahead.
I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to grant the applicant's request of November 2nd, 2021, to withdraw the site plan review of eighty-six Main Street without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second by Jeremiah, I guess. And then all in favor, please say, I'm sorry, let me I gotta do. Okay. I keep forgetting. Dave, I'll start with you.
Hi.
Okay, Jeremiah.
Hi.
And Christopher.
Hi.
And myself, I. So there's four, four eyes and um, Brian's not with us this evening, so. Um, okay, they're withdrawn. Okay. The the sewer planning, that is anybody, has everybody got had a chance to look at that study, that draft, that scope of work?
I didn't read the entire thing. I read most of it.
What's um, Danielle, what is this for a bid or is this an engineer? I mean, a group that's gonna do this or what is this? A scope of work?
It's a draft scope of work that the DPW director has um, drafted um, with some input from me and Warren and I met with him um, last week. But this is basically another expanded approach to what was done about a decade ago with FXM. Um, and this that study had been more about uh, just solely looking at what would be the projected increase in tax revenue. This is a this is quite a bit more than that, and it is very focused on um, how what financing scheme should the town embark on in order to fund sewer and what would the betterment and assessment um, process be like? How would how would the properties be bettered? How would assessments change? Um, it goes into um, much more of the financial aspect of it rather than just predicting new growth, but that is also a part of it. So prediction of new growth. Um, also trying to figure out what what new development, redevelopment, a development of vacant land, et cetera, could take place um, based on having sewer and um, in including consideration of what the market would allow. And and based on that, providing some um, you know, projections for the tax and tax revenue increase. But the tax revenue generation is not the sole point of the study. It's just it's one of several points of the study.
Yeah, I can I can gather that from from reading it. So this will go out to a bid to have an engineer and a general or or consultant type group do this?
Yeah, it would be an RFP, so not necessarily lowest bidder, but um. Could be the approach.
Yeah, I don't know if you uh, if you if you guys are familiar with Joe, but he does have a bunch of experience with sewer and incl- including uh, this this doing this kind of work. So he he seemed very is very knowledgeable. And when I read through it, I was I was impressed by the completeness of it. So um, I think he did a great job and um, we we did add a few things to a few points to it at the time, but for the most part, he's nailed it right down pretty good. If we get asking for in that particular thing, we'll have we'll have a good basis for making decisions. I can tell you that. So.
I I would agree with that. It's very comprehensive as far as what will be studied and then whatever is the product that's delivered should cover the parts that kind of concern me. And again, this is just a scope of work, but is how we define um, and and how it impacts. Um, and again, back to define, they define a property that could be connected to the system and that that property then is potentially assessed a higher rate. And I, you know, I just wanna I know, again, this is just a scope of work and that will be looked at, but I think a lot of townspeople will be if you're off a main street on a street, like what constitutes could be and also do your property also go up. And again, as a major, it's line number two in this thing is one of the motivating things of this whole thing is that proposition proposition two and a half allows you to, you know, get a little bit more with the assessed value in the town. So if you jack up all the assessments all the way down Main Street and then all the could be connected to properties, it's a whopping sum of money and it just gives the town the ability to, you know, add more tax assessment to everyone in town to again, do things that maybe not all the people in the town want them to do, you know? I think everybody's behind the sewer. But you know, that just worries me a little bit because think about it, we're talking sewer. But what this assessment does is it jacks up the tax assessable tax values of everybody in this whole town. That's kind of scary.
Yeah, I I, Dave, I want to I want to think that um, that the company that we would that would respond, companies that would respond to the RFP, the one we would ultimately choose would have some experience because the comments you just made would apply to any town that did this. So I'm assuming that they would find that they would find us uh, some solutions to that that minimize the impact on the rest of the city. I think we indicate that that's what we want to do.
Um, yeah, because I mean, you're selling this and this was sold to everybody a couple of weeks ago and and I'm hundred percent behind it. And many people I talked to in the last three weeks have been the same. But you know, it's being sold as going down Main Street. So again, it's that item number two on that part of his study there or their study, sorry, that assesses the ones in proximity. Uh, they're using the word future.
Well, that's why he's asking. That's why the que- it's a question in there. The question is for the people who respond to RFP, whoever we choose, to tell us how how it is that we.
No, I get that. I get that, Mr. Chairman. I was I'm just saying what concerns me. So I'm not I'm looking forward. I'm not questioning the wording here. Do that study. Absolutely. I just mean that I'm concerned, you know, with how we define connectivity that also dings people that, hey, I just bought a septic system three years ago. And now I'm getting dinged because I'm two hundred feet back from Main Street and I have a two bedroom, you know, house. I don't need this line, you know, and I'm gonna get assessed more. So I I'm just I'm just sensitive to that. And hopefully we stick with at least on this first tier, just, you know, you're on Main Street. That's the assessable kind of um.
Well, that's what I think. I think that's the um, those are some of the answers that we're looking for with the RFP, I think. So we don't we don't have them yet. So I understand, I you know, and I understand that I read the whole thing too. So I understand exactly where you're coming from there. But but my my takeaway from it was that we're gonna get some input as to as to how that works.
Yep. I like the bylaws, you know, drafting bylaws that would help. I mean, there's it's again, like you said, it's very comprehensive.
Yep.
Um, and so it's this this is uh, this is good. It's just I'm a little concerned on that one.
It was definitely done by somebody with some experience in this matter. So.
Yeah, you you gotta you gotta ask the question during the RFP so we can get the answer, the outcome from the RFP. Once we hire somebody, if it's not in that RFP, we might not get the answer. And we may ask for it and may not get it. So this forces that answer.
Yeah, I think that was what I was. I think Chris, that was probably a good way of putting it. That's kind of what I was I was where I well, I mean, that's why I kind of tried to say that's where I was coming from, that we're gonna ask them the question and
Right.
we have to ask that question and then they say, okay, well, here's here's what's been done. Here's here's.
Right.
And here's.
And you gotta ask.
And you could.
You gotta ask all those.
We only want to choose tier one. That's it.
Yeah, you gotta ask all those questions upfront to get the the right answer. Well, not the right answer, get the real answer for any question that may come up.
We're trying to get information and knowledge so we can make good decisions. That's what we're after here.
I have one other question too, that maybe Danielle can answer or even Vincenzo, but what it it could you explain a little bit to me the chapter eighty-five? I think it's a section fifteen B, which um, it kind of limits the town, the assessed value that they can on half the value. And I mean, I can read it. I just wanna like, can you put that in lay terms of what that means?
I can't. Is that the section that that I'm refers to levy limit?
Yeah, I mean, so is it just uh, and again, Vincenzo's been closer to this. So is it like the so half of the construction value? So if it's a hundred million dollars, the town can only recover.
Yeah, basically what that basically if you redo it, you have to redo it a couple of times because I did.
Three times.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, basically, it's it's an attempt to keep uh, the towns from wasting the entire cost of the in the the base infrastructure, pump stations and so forth on a small group of people in the beginning. Because then because you're building it for posterity, you're building it for growth. So basically, that's why they want to just only allow you to 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 uh, to get half or or take only half of those costs and apply them to the um, to the to the uh, vitamins and everything, because the rest of it is is for the future people and they'll have to pay for it when it comes around. So so there is an investment that we that the town would that gets has to make that there's no return on until you until you grow into the system also. That's what that chapter eighty-five is all about. Okay. Vincenzo.
Uh, thank you, Chair Pierce. So one thing I want to add too is that it's interesting you brought that up, David, because the other thing that is gonna come up, and we haven't discussed it yet on the select board, but because of that split of how much you can put on those that are gonna receive the direct betterment, it does not stop town meeting from getting their money back on the debt financing side. Remember that chart of how mu- you know, the twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five? So it's something that we have to, again, I look at everything in net numbers. That's just like because of my profession, I don't look at growth. So the thing is that um, to your point almost on that, like, we need to make sure too that well, we accept that we can't, you know, we gotta do a fifty-fifty split here, but we backdoor it by saying, all right, what we're gonna say is that ninety percent of the financing cost is gonna go on those that got the betterment and ten percent to everybody else. Right? And again, this is more of a side. I I'm just it just it it jogged my memory that this is something that came up because I could see I could see the town wanting this. And if we and the majority of the town, as I've seen on some votes, figuring out a way of how to defend their pocket at the cost of others, I I'm just be I'm just being honest. So, you know, I I like I I think that that backdoor, I think, is the more I think that is more consequential even on if maybe a home two hundred feet away got reassessed higher. I I mean, maybe not for that specific person, but.
Person, right. Yeah, I get you. I get you. Yeah, townwide, uh, understood. Yeah.
Because I can tell you that, okay, I mean, what if everyone by the Andover or not even? What if everybody by like the Andover and Middleton and Peabody Lines just stacked town me? I mean, like, do you see what I mean? It's a it's something where that's the thing, town meeting, the beauty of it is who shows up boats, but it seems like with big things like this, people vote and come and like, I think that you know, so so that's the other thing. I just wanted to point it out that there's a lot of uh, moving parts here, but hopefully some of these studies will help us make an informed decision. I mean, I personally think that I have a lot of confidence that this is gonna happen once we have everything. I mean, that we have a lot of tailwinds here. I mean, more than any other. And again, I'm not saying others didn't try, but no one had some of the tailwinds we have now. I mean, Warren and Chris, you guys have been around forever. You've seen it like, I mean, I don't know if there was any other situation. I haven't talked to your group since the meeting, but after talking to Steve O'Leary and some others, I no one has been able to identify another period in time that there was this much going for it for sure.
Right.
You know, so but yeah, I know, but good point. I can take that back because we have a strategic planning meeting in a couple of weeks. You know, I know we keep adding things to the agenda. I mean, we might be in that back room at the police station till like two in the morning, but um, but it is true.
It's a front room. It's not a back room.
I don't know. I've never been there. I mean.
It's a very lovely room. I helped design that room, young man.
Yeah.
Then I'm sure it's very lovely.
It's the community room there.
Yeah, it's a community training room. Yeah.
So, um, but yeah. Yeah, we'll bring this up. I mean, this will be something that will definitely come up and then, you know, kind of uh, and although and also if anybody missed it, we did award, uh, we we did settle with a contract. And I have to go back to my notes. I don't have them. I have them in the car, but I believe that we actually came in a couple hundred thousand less than expected on the contract with Wright Pierce to do the the design.
That's another three hundred thousand from the state, right?
One hundred. We had a lot of three.
Oh, all right.
We did get the max, which was a hundred. But um, and again, I I I think that this is kind of the other thing we all presented is that you know, now that we're getting into the real, not just the what if and what I call the play zone, the numbers Wright Pierce did a good Wright Pierce, even with that hundred and fifteen million, that is an overestimation. I mean, they really packed it on just so we can surprise on the downside, hopefully. So. But yeah, good stuff.
It's always better to be high than low. Because when you when you go low and then you gotta go back for more money, it's a tough road.
Yeah.
I'd rather turn money back in.
Thank you, Vincenzo, for that input, you know, we're gonna but I'm but I'm looking forward to hoping and Dave, you you know, you're right on the money with some of those things. We're we're gonna but but again, I looking forward to gathering information and knowledge from this whole thing that we can make. Because we can we can we can clearly say, okay, we're only going to tier one, if you will, we're only gonna do Main Street. We're not gonna go after any of the people further back. We're gonna do whatever we need to do to get the pipes in the ground because once the pipe's in the ground and then you'll begin to hear from the Eames streets and the Birdette roads where as they slowly go on. and then you'll begin to hear from the Eames streets and the Burdette roads, where as they slowly go underwater and cap, and the septic systems get to be 50,000, then they're going to say, you know, I'll gladly give 30 to hook up the sewer. You know, I mean, that's, that's basically how.
And, and get a loan for 20 years for it too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't do that. You can't do that with a septic system.
No, you can't. No, you can't.
But you can do that with this, with municipal sewer.
If we want to bring it down 62 all the way to Middleton, past my house, I'll hook on.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you got waterfront property there.
I can't do anything here. It's not really my yard. I, but unfortunately, the, the person that sold me the house never told me of like, I never knew what conservation land was until I got to North Reading and realized my backyard really doesn't belong to me.
Yeah. That's how it goes. Conservation, you gotta learn.
Uh, sorry. Should've come and talked to Danielle before you bought the house. She would've told you.
All I knew about North Reading is that it was north of Reading. That's it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, uh, were all set for this. So did you want anything out of us, Danielle, for this, other than to say that we kind of, that we concur with the draft? And that.
That's all, only if there were, um, any concerns or any feedback. Joe actually offered to be on the call, but he had a prior commitment, um, that Ricey was going to join. Um, but he's just interested in making sure that we are all, uh, you know, comfortable with the scope before it's further to the next step.
I think that, I think that hits well down and I think that he will get us, I think that what, if we get somebody that's able to address all those issues, we're going to get a pretty comprehensive answer. And it's going to make it a lot easier for us to decide which way to go. So.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to the results to that. So, okay. Good enough. Anything else on that? Okay. Um, we do have a bunch of, or a couple of ZBAs that we can go through before we get to 830. So. And, uh.
Hey Danielle, what's this, what's zoning on Anthony Road?
I want to say Residence A, but let me check while we're talking.
Anthony Road. I don't think.
I thought, I thought, I thought it was A, but it looks like B.
Yeah. Yes, and, well, yeah, I know, there's all, it's all very small lots, so it could very likely be B.
Yeah, and they're late, they're later lots.
But it may be A, non-conforming.
Yeah, that's true. They might have changed it.
Yes.
These are RA. They're just non-conforming. Are, unless they were built as, um, a cluster.
No, they weren't built as a cluster. They, they were built as, they were built as Bs and then they got, they got upgraded to As.
I see. Okay.
Good night, Vincenzo.
Good night. Thanks, thanks for showing up, Vincenzo.
No problem. I'd stay longer, but, uh, back-to-back night meetings, I got, I gotta, I, I got too much to lose upstairs in Massachusetts. If I get thrown out of the house, I'm going to lose it all. So I gotta get back.
Alrighty, um.
So which one are we looking at? Are we looking at the Anthony Road one?
I was going to start with.
I only asked the question. It, it was a quick question because I'm looking at the lots and it looked like they're 20,000 square foot lots. But I thought it was Residence A there and Danielle just confirmed that. That today's zoning is Residence A, so they're not conforming Residence A because they were on the ground prior to the zoning change.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what? It, I remember that subdivision that was trying to go in behind Anthony Road there. Those are all.
Those are all Residence A, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right down there, right, right down next to there, right?
Yeah, that's right. Now that I think about it. Well, that, and that, except that one house on the corner that they were going to keep.
Yep.
Um, as an.
Keep it as a 40B.
Yeah.
As affordable, not a 40B.
That was going to stay on a small lot, so.
Right.
So, uh, 271 Main Street is, uh.
The Chargers.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's for the.
Yeah, and, and, and no cheese, look at the, look at how they describe it to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Right? They tell them right there, which they didn't do to us, that they're going to have a moving scrolling sign. And I think we should weigh in and say that we don't like this. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I, I, I think that's all we can do is say we support the building inspector. We can comment on it if you want. But basically the building inspector says you can't have that kind of scrolling sign.
Right.
And, um, and so we support the building inspector's decision.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't think we need more than that on 271 Main Street.
Okay.
Any, anybody have any difference on that? Any comments? Okay. Okay. So the 33 Anthony Road. Um, I, you know, when I, yeah, it looked like um, plenty of room there. I mean, I don't, I was almost wondering why they had it. I mean, I guess maybe one dimension doesn't work at all.
Well, in Residence A, they got, they need that 40 feet. They could, they could back that building up by four feet. And they could just move it back farther, four feet, they'd be fine. The whole building. They'd have four more feet.
Yeah, but you don't know how the interiors match up, so.
No, 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 Warren. Look at the, zoom in on the, on the left-hand corner. There's a, there's a little area there that's not built on. Make it a straight front instead of this little angled front there. They're not affecting the way they tie into the, into the main building at all. It's right under the A, under the draft.
Why would they? Yeah.
Because that's what the architect wants to make it look pretty with a little, maybe they want to put a door there and they're going to put a step. I don't know. But they could, they could still put a door there with a step. It's just flush with the other, with the rest of the building. They could actually put a, they could actually put a three-foot overhang. I think legally, because it's not, it's not a building, to cover the doorway.
And maybe they'll do that. But I mean, the addition, the addition they're showing there is 750 square feet. The house is 1,000. So it's a pretty big addition, pretty big quote unquote garage. And again, this is my thing, this is my thing with ZBA is, you know, and I mean, it'll get to Mr. Noel at some point. But it's like, is this really a garage or is this a house addition? And I, that has context because if you're just looking for, you know, something to park your cars in, you know, the, the boards plural are, are willing to kind of say, oh, you know, you got to get your cars in, you want, it's no way.
David, it's worse, it's, it's actually worse than that. You know what that is? That's an, that's an ADU in process.
But that, but that's kind of what I'm saying is, and it gets back to the point where, you know, we're working on that. But, you know, it's like, just be honest. You're, you're not building a garage. And so when you go to the ZBA for a variance to, to go into setback, it really should be, and then, and if, if you don't, you should, there should be a moratorium, uh, a given five years, 10 years that you can't go change what you did because you're misrepresenting what you're presenting to the boards. And we represent the residents. We've got voted in and we represent them. So when I say it's okay because you're building quote unquote a garage, and this is like constantly happens if you talk to Jerry, then they go submit a change in the permit or whatever, and then it becomes an upper story apartment. And I don't even care if it's apartment. It's not even the issue. It's, I'd rather just have applicants be honest about what they're applying for. You want a variance to expand your house. No problem. That's what you're trying to do. Now, whether ZBA lets them do it or not, that's not up to me. Us, we'll comment on it, but that's ZBA. But I just, I just don't like this disingenuous process that we allow to happen. And it, whether before I got on this board or now that I'm on it, I see it time and time again. People are proposing garages and they don't build garages. They build additions.
We've been, we've been fighting this battle with the ZBA.
For 20, for how long, Warren? 28 years?
Yeah. Me, about me 30 years, you 26 or something.
Yeah, whatever it is, as long as I've been on the board.
We brought this up with Danielle when we talked about the ADUs on the last, you know, over the summer. How do you put teeth into it that says at least if someone's going to come forward and wants to actually do this? You know, they can, they, they're honest.
And this one, and this one, you know, I, there's a couple of things in play here. One, it's, it's 22 feet long. I mean, deep, but that's what you need for a car, for a garage, for a car. It's, uh, the back of it is just barely the 20 feet off the leach field that's required by the code.
Yep.
And, and so the front of it, if you took four feet off the front of it or three and a half feet basically off the front of it.
Maybe.
Car, then the back of your car bumper, so your car is going to stick out of the back of the.
Well, my car doesn't. I get a 20-foot garage.
Huh?
My garage is less than 20 feet.
If you have one of the big SUVs.
Well, too bad. I'm sorry.
Very, that 22 feet is a pretty standard size for a garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but then what's above it?
Strung in the back and by the septic system and then they're.
So I didn't think it.
They only show plan view, so you don't really know what they're doing. And again, I think for ZBA to issue approval, you know, to pass, approve, whatever, they should have more information. And I've had this argument before, like this at least does give a plan from LGR. So at least we do have an accurate civil plan, but a lot of, there's no elevation, so you have no context of what you're approving.
Right.
Yeah, this will be 28 feet tall.
I would just, we, we, I can't tell you, Dave, how many times we've sent the comment, not enough information, not enough information, not enough. Remember, Chris, we just.
Oh, yeah. There's more information than normal.
We'd say, yeah, there's more, yeah, there's more than we usually get.
So, right. It's been, it's been better recently, but you're right, Dave. Haven't, haven't, being able to see what the building is going to look like, because this is going to be 28 feet tall to the top of the roof. They're going to, they're going to put a mast to bed.
They have every right to, you know, they have every right to if it's all within the setbacks and this, but they're coming to us and coming to the ZBA.
Yeah, for variance.
They're coming to the residents. That's what I keep have to redefine. It's not us, me personally. They're coming to the residents to say, listen, I, I want you to help me out, give me a little extra because I'm building, I need to build a garage. But then you're really not telling the residents what you're really trying to do.
Right.
Just asking us to approve it on complete faith that, yeah, yeah, go ahead, build closer to the, your next door neighbor. That's no problem. And then that, and that next door neighbor, then they end up building this giant thing. And how do, how do we or I protect that neighbor, um, with, with the information I have right now? I don't have it, so.
Well, you know, we certainly have the option and we've, we've had the option for years to, to say, uh, not enough information. And we've said that many times. So, I mean, and this one, I mean, we could, you know, I mean, I'm sure that, uh, Chris, if you made the comment that we should think they should move back four feet, they'll easily defeat that with the impact on the septic system.
So Warren, Warren, have a question. There's no cellar here, so it's a slab, right? With a frost wall?
Well, 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 before you say that, I'm going back to Dave again and I'm saying, Dave, that you're, you're right. There's no elevations here. I have no idea that there's no, I mean, this garage could be below ground. It could be, uh, down lower in the backyard, be higher in order to.
Yeah. No, you're right. You're right.
There you go. We have no elevations.
That's right.
It's only half a plan.
But, but you, you are, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you can't.
I do, I do.
The septic won't affect the hot, the building because it's a concrete in the ground and there's nothing under it.
But, but, but there's going to be a, a, even if there's just a frost wall back there or, or a knee wall back there.
Yeah.
If the septic system is a little bit higher than the floor of the garage, you need the 20 feet.
Right, 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 right. So you need to know the elevation.
Yeah, that could be a pump-up system. It could be way up here, you know, we don't, there's no way to know with no elevations on the plan. So his point is well taken, but it's been that way forever.
Yep.
It's been that way forever. We rarely do we get anything of any consequence that we can actually.
But all we can do, you know, is, on this is just say, need more, more information.
Information.
And that's what I told you we've been doing for years.
But I think we can make the comment specific that, um, for, for a variance such as this, we would recommend an elevation plan be required. You can say why. I mean, I don't, I mean, I won't.
You know, on the elevation plan, technically, all the elevation plan would do is prove that he needs to stay in the 20 feet off the back. And then, um, and that's it.
So do you know why?
It still doesn't address the root problem that Dave brought up and that I was, that I, that I, that my first thought was ADU in process.
Yeah. Yeah, it's exactly what it is.
So, so, you know, there's, there's, you know, the Board of Appeals, I don't know, maybe we need to have a joint meeting with the Board of Appeals to talk about some of these things.
We haven't had that with this new board either.
No, we haven't.
And I'm, I'm the liaison, so I will probably attend this particular meeting, which is in two weeks, is it? Hang on a sec. What is it? Uh, let me just zoom up. It is, uh, November 18th, yeah. So I will attend that, but, um, and, and maybe as well, it's still, you know, we're still discussing this in the public. So what is, what is the duty or the limits of the liaison such as maybe like Vincenzo here? You're, you just can add some comment maybe, but you're not really.
Well, technically, your job is, technically, the liaison goes to the Board of Appeals and brings information from them back to us. Technically, that's what the liaison does.
That's, that's fine.
You can do it both ways though.
I didn't know what it is, you know, what exactly.
Well, technically, the liaison is not supposed to go throw a bomb in the middle of there, you know.
No, no.
I don't want, I don't think we should do this.
But he can also, he can also bring the information from us to them because we're commenting on, on their meeting.
I, I think we need to do that in writing through Danielle as a result of this particular discussion that we're having.
Yeah, no, we should, absolutely.
To it, I can add color to it, but I, I, I mean, I know, I know my, I know where my fence is. I'm not going to, you know.
Right, no, you don't want to, you don't want to throw a bomb like Warren says, but yeah, to, to, if, if you need to, to help them understand why we're saying this, that's fine.
Yes, that's fine, but we need to, we need to communicate. Our initial communication to the Board of Appeals needs to be as a result of this discussion through Danielle, through the Board of Appeals. So they get it in their packet, they read it, so at the day of the meeting, they can turn to you, Dave, and say, what, what, you know, I don't, I don't, explain this to me. And you can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is nothing, I, I hope anyone that is, uh, you know, would later listen to these minutes or whatever, understands this is not personal. This is just, I want to treat everybody in the town the same way when we see these applications. It just, I think it's just fair to the people of the town to provide more information when you're looking to go outside of the boundaries. You should provide more information so people understand exactly what you're doing. If I was the next door neighbor, I'd demand it, you know, but.
For the record, Dave, in all the years that we've asked for more information, we've never gotten many. They, the meeting just happens and they just go their merry way, so.
Yeah. Let's hope it'll change.
Sorry. So that's, you know, that's it.
Okay. Well, no, that's, uh, no, that, but that's the format. That's how we're going to do it. So let's decide what we want to say. We want to say not enough information?
For lack of.
There needs to be grading on the plan?
Yes.
Grading, did you say?
Yeah.
Grading, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good that Warren says that because of the proximity to the, uh.
To the septic system.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, all of these things weigh into, you know, you go into it wanting to help people, but you need more information.
Right, because without that.
And, okay, so the, and the third thing would be elevations. Is that, would that be fair?
Yeah.
Third thing would be elevations, so we can see what it'll look like.
Because, you know, you see that little thing behind the house? Yeah, that's an easy place to put, set of stairs in there to that second floor.
Anything else that you want to add to that to send off to the Board of Appeals on this one? Okay, all right. Well, I, that's.
That's start.
Yeah. So, uh, okay.
Two tar box? This is interesting.
Kind of the same kind of thing a little bit, right? I mean, I think, um.
It's the backside he's violating. It's a 50-foot setback from the rear? I thought it was the other way. I thought it was the other way around.
No.
It's 40 in front and 50 in back.
Right. 25 on the side.
Yeah, so when you look at it, there really is no real way to, to get around that one for a garage. And, and it's not oversized, but they want three garages. You don't find, you don't find.
It looks pretty straightforward when you, at first glance, um, it looks like a, like a hobby garage or something he's putting in or something.
Yeah, he probably wants to put his, well, I'd say their tractor.
Wants to keep the Bugatti in there so that he don't take it out.
Exactly. Exactly. He, he ain't cutting his own grass.
No, no, I mean, I mean, a lot of those houses up there came with three-car garages, so.
That's correct.
Not unusual to see somebody come ask for one, so.
So is the, is the request for setback relief on side or the back?
Back, I think.
It's just. Yeah, they've only got 42.9 in the back, so they're 7.1 short.
Yeah.
But who's behind them? And then you can look at the.
Yeah, they don't really show, but you can go aerial.
But, oh, no, but there's a young lady in the middle of my screen that gave us an overview, aerial, and also gave us the parcel now.
I did have time to do that this time.
And, and it's not going to really affect anybody because it's all wooded behind them.
Yeah.
From the aerial map.
I didn't really see, I didn't really see too much to complain about on this. However, um. I didn't really see, I didn't really see too much to complain about on this, however, um.
I'd like to see an elevation.
I, I'm sorry?
I'd like to see an elevation.
Yeah, well, I would, but I would just reiterate one thing that we, that we, that we seem to, that we have to keep talking about, and that never really seems to, uh, sink in for some reason. The idea behind the Board of Appeals is to alleviate a hardship.
Right.
So the question is, the question we used to ask all the time, right, Chris? We used to ask.
Yeah, where's the hardship?
Hardship.
There is no hardship for either one of these.
Yeah, do they need a third garage?
Warren, are you saying this is a first-world problem?
Yes.
It's a first-world hardship.
This, this is, this is a North Running world problem.
So we would ask all the time, what's the hardship?
I am not judging, I am not judging, I'm just like more joking, sorry.
Because I mean, and if we talk to Danielle, there is no hardship for land, uh, for setbacks, am I right? Danielle, is that what it's?
No, there can be, but, I mean, they're really rare, and it really has to be owing to some particular circumstance about that property. It's not.
They have to build a handicap ramp to get somebody in and out of the house, there'd be, there's a structure that may violate the setbacks, but because it's a handicap ramp, it's okay, you know, that's right.
I don't even know, I'm looking at Danielle's face, I don't know if that's actually always true, too.
It's just really hard, like, it's really, really hard to meet the hardship, and it's not, and it's not because you need the money, or it's nothing to do with the person who owns the house. It's every property, it's like you have ten houses in a zoning district on one street, and one of them, all of a sudden, there's a cliff that falls off in the backyard, that one house gets to build up a little bit because they can't have a back room, like, that's the, that's the kind of situation that hardship means. It's owing to the soil, it's owing to something about the lot, the lot is faulty somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this lot is not faulty, so there is, you know, like you said, Warren, on all these things, we should say, where's the hardship? Even on the other one, there is no real hardship to put a garage up. There is no real, you know, for either one of these pieces of property. This one, I think, affects the neighbors less than the other does. Because it pulls it forward to the front edge of the lot. This one, you won't ever see that corner.
Yeah, yeah.
For where, for where it's located. For everybody else.
Do you want to make, I mean, based on, based on that, do you want to, do you want to, you know, comment on this one, or, I mean, just let it go, I mean?
Well, I think we, I think we should comment on it, because we're gonna comment on one, we should comment on both of them, because they're basically the same thing.
Well, this one's not quite the same, because it's almost hidden, the neighbors, I do not see it.
Well, that's true, it is almost hidden, but it's the same thing in the eyes of the law.
And it's also, I don't, I don't, but I would, but I do have a question on elevations, I can't, I, I see no elevation, so I don't know if this is one story tall, or five, three stories tall, or.
Yeah, I have no context, so, yeah, I put that, I put that in there, and then, uh, uh, we could put fail to see the hardship, you know, because I don't.
Right, yeah, that's, that's right, there is no hardship on any of these things. You know, e- even, even the, uh, the first one. But that's, that's a different thing.
Yeah.
You know, the electrical thing.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, with the.
Well, that's not a variance.
That's not a variance, right.
Buildings.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, they probably got a, the, the big problem we have right now with this, as best I can see, is that there's been, there's too much precedent in the past, and, and.
That, that's with another, but that's with another board, totally.
I, I know, and that, and this board has the opportunity to.
Stop it.
You know, make it right, or, or to do it right, if they, if they so desire, but, but, but they're gonna, but they're gonna be sitting there with these people in the forum that said, you know, I can give you three hundred examples in the past ten years. And, um, and they're gonna be under a lot of pressure to, to do something different, and this one, this one, because it's somewhat, somewhat, this one has had probably the least impact of any of the ones we've looked at.
That's true, but that's why I'm saying, you know, you could put one, you know, one thing or two things, is where's the hardship and where's the elevation?
Yeah, what do the elevations look like?
Because saying the elevation twice in a row, and hardship twice in a row makes them think about it. The elevation's really important, you don't know what this is gonna look like.
Yeah.
What's the second?
Most towns do, most ZBAs do require an elevation.
Elevations, right.
They have to build it to.
Danielle. Danielle, how do you get that in the application requirements, um, for ZBA that they have to provide? If they're, if they're building a structure that is, like, if it's a fence, maybe you just need a site plan and maybe a image of what the fence is, but for a structure, you should show what the structure is.
That's a good question, and I'm actually not sure whether it's in their own rules and regulations, or if it's in our zoning. If it's in the zoning, propose a zoning amendment, making that a requirement of application. I would suggest if we go that route, we would want to get them on board with it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we probably need to have a, we, we probably need to have a short meeting with the Board of Appeals, with the current Board of Appeals, and just, just, just so that we, and, and we should couch it in the terms of, we want to make sure we're all on the same page, because we don't want to be sending out, you don't want to hear, and we don't, and, but what we do want to do is help you make good decisions.
Right.
I think if we couch it in those terms, they'll be willing to meet with us, and we can kind of, uh, put together an understanding among us, so that we kind of work together to make this, you know, work the way it's supposed to.
I agree, well, we did, we did get it on a, on a, uh, a level basis with the last zoning board after a while.
Yeah, it took a while.
Like ten years?
Yeah, so let's, yeah, so let's, Danielle, let's put that kind of on our, on, you know, the, the future agenda to do something like that. I think it would be good for us, and it'd be good for them.
So, what do you want to, what do you want to say for this one, Warren?
Well, definitely, I think what I already said was, uh, elevations, I don't have any idea what the elevations are.
Yeah.
How it's gonna look, you know, what it looks like to the neighbors, and but again, this one's a little hard to be pushy about, because it is so well-hidden.
Oh. The house will be seen by the neighbor. The side of the house will be seen.
Hardship, question mark, and we would.
Yeah, there you go.
Do you not want me to remark on the elevation then?
No, 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 remark the elevation, but on the hardship, put a question mark next to it, don't, you know, just say one word with a question mark. And I would do that on this, on the other one also, if that's okay with you, Mr. Pierce. On the, uh, on Anthony Road, too.
We should, um, yeah, and let's, but let's, um, because if they come to us and say, listen, we, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're just, the way we got this worked out, we're just gonna try to help people. Uh, they can't afford to move, they need, so they want to expand their properties. And, 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 you know, personally, I know Dave will be mad at me for this, but, uh, if they, if they are building for an ADU, I, 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 I mean, it's gonna be, it'll be in an attached ADU, it'll fit within the confines as opposed to a detached ADU, so it would be something that would probably provide some additional housing for, hopefully for a family member, and so forth, and I.
I, I.
You know.
Warren, I don't think he's against that, I think what he's against is the ruse. You know, and I, and I am also against the ruse, somebody saying, I'm gonna build a garage, and suddenly you've got an apartment up above it.
That's, that's what exactly I'm saying, because, again, the, but, you know, safety, uh, in town is under the impression it's a garage. Uh, it doesn't, it, it doesn't hit Deb's roles, she's not aware it's an ADU. Um, it just goes around, it doesn't end around on all the town departments. And then you leave poor Jerry Noel fighting that fi- fight like.
Well, I think that we, I think it's.
No, he's got no tools, no legal backing, and the poor guy, you know, gets worn out trying to fight this fight alone, because the other departments, um, don't change the zoning rule or something to make it so that, um, all the towns work in unison, that the fire and police want to know about these places when they happen, um, they want to be able to comment on where they want, you know, fires, fire suppression, if, you know, that applies at all, if it's, you know, apartment stuff, they want to know about detectors, access, egress, stuff that Jerry handles, but once it goes to life safety, just like you do when you're building a house, you have fire prevention, come visit, they do a walkthrough, they point out where they want things, none of that happens when it's just gonna be a quote-unquote garage.
Well, I agree, but as I, I think it's, I think it would be easier for people to quote, tell the truth, um, if we had an ADU law that, that allowed them to do something like this and admit to it.
Well, yes and no, Warren, if we do this, if we do the, the low-hanging fruit, as it's been called a few times, and just do the attached, then the people with the detached are just gonna keep coming, you know, like they have been, you know, all these years, they're just gonna keep building those garages and going.
But this one's, this one's attached, so.
I get it, but you're, you know what I'm saying, is many of these are detached, actually, and so they're, they're just gonna keep doing the end around.
I don't think there are that many detached ones, but there are, you know.
Well, what Jerry says, this is a bunch stuff that we don't know about, it's the poolhouse, it's more the poolhouses that are getting, uh, I think he's complaining about.
That were, been in existence for years, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all, like Chris said, it's the ruse, just rather have it up front.
Yeah. Well, let's do that for now, this for now, but let's also.
Yeah, we should meet with them.
Yeah, yeah, we will, and we should really be able, that we should really try to give them an update on where we're headed with the ADU situation, too, to give them, give them some. You know?
Yep, that's right.
You know, that we're trying, we're, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to solve some of this problem. So.
What is, it, I'm just interested, because Jeremiah is very quiet, but Jeremiah, do you have a comment on kind of what we're cashing around here?
Uh, no, I mean, it, it all makes perfect sense, and, I mean, we don't have enough information, so pushing back makes little sense. Um, yeah, I mean, you guys got it covered, I.
Jeremiah is doing what, Jeremiah is doing what I did the first year I was on, listening a lot.
Yeah, I, it, and I, I just didn't want to make sure, like, I'm, I'm speaking for me, not for everyone else, I just want to make sure everyone's heard.
Yeah, they, they, you were kind of quiet the first year, too, Dave, as I recall. I was part of the one that was. I was probably the one that was never quiet.
I was, I was quiet first two years.
There you go.
Well, that's okay, you, but, but, you know, you have to learn where the lines are with the market.
Yeah. There's no problem with it, and asking a question is always good, too.
Yep.
To make sure everybody's speaking. Hey, uh, Warren, you want to do that, uh, that continuance, in case someone's interested?
We can, we can do that.
Not, not to get off the point, I mean, we're done with the ZBAs.
No, we're done, we're done, so Cresview, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, let me, let me get to the motions. Bear with me one second, there we go, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Hayden.
I moved that the Community Planning Commission vote to grant the requested continuance of the public hearing for thirty-nine Chestnut Street and nine Flint Street until Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at eight P M.
Second motion, do I have a second? Dave, did you say? Okay.
I did.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Dave?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeremiah?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
And Warren is aye as well.
All right, now, you can.
Okay, so that leaves us with only, uh.
Danielle?
Administrative updates.
Okay. So, speaking of ADUs, tomorrow morning, um, I'll be meeting with the development team about that very issue, um, to get their initial feedback, concerns, I shared with them the model bylaw for Massachusetts, which has all the highlighted issues that different communities have considered, and I'll hopefully have a good discussion with them about that. Report back and see where we go from there.
Hmm.
Um, was approached by, um, Allison, who's the intern for the transcript just now, who's been covering some of the CPC meetings, um, she is interested, um, in interviewing me toward the end of the month about a couple of the town meeting Warren articles, one being the sewer, the other being, um, the affordable housing questions, um. For sewer, I've also suggested that, you know, we reach out to the DPW director and a town administrator, because it is more their project with us supporting it, but I told her I'd be happy to speak with her about it. Um, and the other was, uh, where does the CPC intend to go following the, um, affordable housing, uh, you know, the outcome at town meeting about those, uh, properties, and, um, I, I mean, I'll certainly be happy to, you know, talk to her about it, but I wanted to mention it to you in case anyone else felt that, you know, I didn't know if I ought to suggest in, including the CPC members, too, um, I didn't know how you felt about that, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, we, we kind of all put our butts on the line there for, in favor of, of, of it, and they didn't, the board, the select board didn't, you know, shot us down. Uh, but we didn't back away, and, and I will point out, the Finance Committee also supported us.
Yes.
And, um, so, I mean, there is obviously some concern about, uh, what happens, and, 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 and one of the people at the very meeting got up and said, I don't, I think we should do something with this, I don't want to see this can kicked down the road, and everybody said, well, what, the next select board meeting will, and now what's happened is the can has been kicked down the road.
Of course it has.
So that's where we're, so, so, I mean, that's, I mean, I mean, you know, it was a member of the public that brought this up, and so, um, and it's for them to tell them, yep, you're right, that's what happened, they kicked it down, the can down the road, so. There's, um, um, if that ends up in print, print someplace, I mean, I don't know, it's, uh, it's. We just, we're just trying to, with, you know, the point I tried to make at the meeting is, we, we passed this bylaw in two thousand eight, this overlay district in two thousand eight. It's twelve years later, and we still can't get anything going.
Right, and people keep asking us, what are we doing to fend off fortyBs? We've tried. We don't get any support.
One building, we can't even.
Where the neighbors support it, the neighbors support it, but they think it's better to go buy it. To, because they don't have a process, which they could have done after the fact of town meeting release.
Well, basically, uh, you know, the town meeting releasing it to the, to the, to the, uh, to the, uh, select board, they then, they were then write the RFP, and so they can go whatever they want in the RFP.
That's right, that's right.
It's got to be looked at by seventeen different conservation people before we can, I mean, they can put all that in the RFP.
Yeah.
They wanted to, but, but, but they kind of, uh, you know, in, they kind of said, no, we don't, we don't have enough information, you know, we want it, we want to set up a policy, well, the policy is in the two thousand eight bylaw overlay.
Yep, it sure is.
Already there, and it's kind of pretty expansive when you read back on it, it allows for quite a bit more than we were asking for, so. So I don't, um, I don't understand why, what they want at this point, and I don't think, I don't think they know what they want either. Um, because I spoke with Bruce Tower about this a little bit, because he was at the meeting, and it's, you know, and.
He was disgusted, too, because I was talking about it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, they got, they got scared about something, that a bunch of people said, oh, no, no, don't, don't do this, figure something out, and I think they got folded.
They got scared of this, Warren.
Yeah, I don't know, I think they folded, you know, uh, they were unsure.
That, that, that one neighborhood that came out, which is what, thirty years old?
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't wet back there until they built that neighborhood. There was water, but it wasn't as what it is now.
Yeah, well, one of the problems back there was Earl Hubble, that about four million gallons of water, right, and our water tower loosened out back there. He broke the water main and went away for the weekend.
There you go.
These people's gotta happen. You didn't know that?
Oh, that was, was that, was that the Hangerani Development?
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that, I mean, I wasn't here, but I remember you talking about it.
Yeah.
And, and for everybody to know. Yeah, for, for, since then, uh, I wasn't on the board at the time, but when the P U D was coming up, there was a geologist working on that firm. That was my brother-in-law.
Yeah. So I, I think that, you know, but let's, you know, let's kind of, you know, let, let's just tell them a straight story about what happened here, and see if we can get some support from the, from the public when we go back again, because I don't, we don't give up, you know, we just keep going, so.
Right, I mean, for my part, I can imagine doing an interview where for my part, I can imagine doing an interview where I answer questions in a factual way and say along the lines of what I said at town meeting. But in terms of if you're interested in a stronger piece of advocacy whereby you are conveying the kinds of opinions that you are now discussing, I was wondering if it would be important for me to suggest that she also speak with you. I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up.
I told you when they, when they told, when the select board told us that we were going to pass it over, I told you that I was going to support it at a town meeting through the entire thing and I did not waver.
Yeah.
And so I still not wavering and I will still support it to whoever I wanted that wants to speak with me about. I mean, I think it's that, you know, there's a lot of people that realize, I mean, this, 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 you know, for the people that are trying to bring a forty B in and um, I mean, this is, this is fodder for them. They can say, you know, these people aren't interested. Look at that. They voted against any.
I wouldn't.
They did, but they went to town meeting and the select board voted against any, uh, any affordable housing. They don't want. It's a black mark against us.
That's right. That's right. Then there'll be one, there'll be one coming within six to eight months, I'll bet you.
Yeah, so we didn't, we, they didn't, we didn't get the chance to prove that we're friendly to affordable housing, you know, which we couldn't.
No, we did not.
We could have done. And it didn't, wasn't going to hurt anybody. What, I mean, what, who's?
Single family homes built to the proper size in a neighborhood and they would have enjoyed the people.
The the the, with the scaling back of it that Danielle did to scale it back based on the input from the neighborhoods. I mean, they couldn't ask for anything better than that.
No, I know.
I don't know why they didn't understand that, so. But yeah, no, she, if they wanted to talk to me, I'm I'm game. Um, I don't, just, you know, I still support what we did two thousand eight. And I still support the fact that this is something that as a community, we have a responsibility to give a little back. We can do that.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
And it hasn't hurt anybody.
It helps everybody.
It helps people, yeah. So geez, let's, you know, let's, that's what, what are we doing, so? All right, uh, anything else, Danielle, you have?
The only thing I had left was, um, I, David gave me some feedback on the Abacus presentation. I didn't know if anyone else had anything uh, to add as Abacus works to kind of refine that. The ultimate goal would be a presentation that we can give to, you know, the select board at a community meeting, what have you. Um, I just didn't know if anyone else had anything more, any other input.
No, I think they did a pretty good job of 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 touching on all the things that, you know, because I know they they added that marketplace in which they didn't have originally, but you know, and and I was really glad to see that because I think that's a selling point uh, that people could get behind. So um, so no, I think they uh, uh, you know, I think they did okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I I have a question. Um, God, the name of the subdivision slips my mind now. Right on Mar- uh, on Marblehead Street, Danielle, the town put a sidewalk into it and they created a forty B for us with an.
Oh, uh, the Bradford Pond Estates subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that that house that was the forty B right off of Marblehead Street, I think it's for sale.
I will find out. Okay.
Is that, is that the forty B one, Jeremiah?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know if it's the forty-one B, but I know that it's across the street from me, so I know. Yeah, it's right on the Bradford Pond.
Right.
So that's one fifty-three Marblehead via gray house that's set back.
Yeah, it's set way back, yeah.
I will find out. Um, they are allowed to sell, but they have to sell it to another eligible buyer and they need.
Right, and they can only make ten percent on the, on the sale, right? Is that what it is?
Um, so they can make a profit that is discounted and they, there's, there's only a certain amount that they are allowed to.
Right.
Have gained from the house. Um, I don't know the formulas, but I'll find it.
All right.
And just, just to help educate me a little bit, especially since it's my neighbor. Um, what what's that all about? The forty B, I mean, because it's a nice house.
Well, from the outside, it's supposed to look just like what they built in the Bradford Estates.
Yeah, basically what it is, Jeremiah, is it's a floor, it's a, it's an affordable house, you know, based on median income and all that. Um, and they, and so people were allowed to buy it at a reduced rate. Um, builder, basically builders, when they build these, they don't make a dime on them. They basically, it's a, it's just cost plus. And then um, and um, it provides a a level of affordable housing and we. The the state is always from, from, I don't even, from many years back, I don't know if Chris might remember how, when they first started this, but um, they wanted every ten percent of everything of of all of our subdivisions to be affordable.
Yeah, they did.
And so we, we have, I don't think we've ever made ten percent, but uh, but that, but but this was the one that they gave uh, gave us as an affordable unit and we took it. I mean, with that, one's better than none, so we took it.
Exactly.
Then there are, as Danielle said, there are rules about transferring the ownership of that property. They're not allowed to take it then. They're not allowed to buy in for next for for an affordable rate based on their income. And then make a big profit on it, so. And then, and again, it does have to go to another qualified buyer.
But they have.
There might be a different property than the one I'm thinking.
It may, it may not be the one. That's correct, Jeremiah. I'm not quite sure. I just was driving by there today and saw it and it was in the right location, so we've got to just verify that. It's one fifty-three is what you're saying, Danielle?
Yeah, one fifty-three. Um, it's.
It's a gray house. It's on the pond side. It's a gray house.
Yeah, it's gray.
That's.
It's one forty-five?
Yeah, one fifty-three, the other one that clearly was done around the same time. Because they're both kind of behind the two houses that are actually on Marblehead, where their older house. Yeah.
All right.
Directly on Bradford Pond. Um, it's just funny to hear the forty B because it's a nice house.
Really nice house.
Yeah.
And it's unusual. It's nice that we were able to get that. It's unusual to have a beautiful three bedroom house that is affordable, you know, has any kind of subsidy. So, but if they do sell it, I mean, they have to give the town notice.
Pretty nice cars going in and out of there, so I don't know.
What's that?
Pretty nice cars going in and out of there.
Yeah, well, I've seen some nice cars over here at forty Bs too and and.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're doing eighty, what is it, seventy percent of mean or eighty percent of mean?
That one is eighty percent of there.
Yeah, eighty percent of mean in the, in this, in Massachusetts or this area of Massachusetts, it's a lot of money. It's like a hundred grand a year, so.
Well, it's, it's a little less than that, but it depends on the family size and.
Yeah.
You know, and also you can buy the house when you are income qualified and then you may later on make more money or you may.
Right.
Someone who does and you're allowed to continue building your assets, but you can never get the same equity in your home that you could have gotten if it wasn't subsidized because you bought it at such a discount, so.
Right.
We'll just.
Well, we were wondering why it was still for sale for that, probably.
Well, no, they they come for sale occasionally. It was just, I, whenever I see one and I think it's a forty B, I like to check to make sure they're selling it the proper way. Not going under the wire because there's not a lot stopping them other than. And deed restriction, yeah.
I mean.
But you know how that can work too, you know?
Unfortunately, yeah.
We hope everybody's paying attention. That's the point.
That's right. That's right.
All right, is that, that all you got there, Danielle? You all set? Okay.
Warren, if you have time this week, can you stop by the office and sign something?
Sure, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Got your TV, Debbie?
That would be my TV, yeah.
She's watching the news, I think.
I'm watching, I was watching the race.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you all very much for coming tonight and I think we've made some headway here tonight. We'll uh, we'll uh, and and thank you, Danielle, for going through that that Shea Lane stuff and getting them here so that we could uh, come up with a
Yeah.
a really good solution for the people, those people. I mean, I think they'll see something happen now and they'll know that we took took notice and did something and that's a good thing, so.
Yeah.